Hey man, you know what man? This the shit I'm talking about right here huh? These goddamn lawmakers who make these laws and they the biggest law breakers man. Where we at right now with this one huh?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, say that one more time.
I say these goddamn lawmakers are the biggest greater law breakers man. Look here TV land, I'ma give you a bomb on this one before I even say what I'm about to say man. Oh, 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 here we go, one more? I say you lawmakers are the biggest goddamn law breakers man in the world man. Hey check us out man, it's a damn shame that we sit here and you vote on people and you depend on people to regulate and run the communities, the very communities that you claim and you live in. You depend on these people from city councilmen to senators, to the mayors, to the, to the freaking, all the way to the funky president with his ugly ass. You depend on these people to do right, buy right, and righteous for the people, by the people, to the people. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong TV land, but this is what voting is all about, right? And this is what being the people is all about, right? So how is it that we vote out, we vote these assholes in the office? And you come to find out these assholes are sitting in the very offices getting these big old million dollar checks, three, four hundred thousand a year, extra pensions on the side over here, and all the time he or she is a fucking dope fiend. Like the very same dope fiends that we see outside is homeless. I mean, help me out here huh? I ain't understand this shit man, where we at with this one man? And make sure you got the destination right dammit, cuz I ain't burning our gas for nothing. Fuel is too damn high man.
Yeah, gas high, man, we in Rhode Island City, Rhode Island.
We in the most man.
Rhode Island City, Rhode Island man, what's that, what's that shit called up there? With all the little small states of Rhode Island and Connecticut and all this shit?
Yeah, that's up north.
Yeah, yeah, northeast, northeast. Yeah, that's, so, so check it out Cap, this is crazy right here. So the people of Rhode Island City, they voted, they voted a motherfucking baser as a city councilman.
Oh shit, oh wait, hold on man.
Yeah, fire up! I'm a dope fiend and I need drugs, I'm out of Fico, the neighborhood thug.
This ain't, wait, this ain't taking us back to Mayor Brown is it?
Oh definitely it is Jack.
Oh no, say it ain't so. What is this idiot's name man? And what's his position again?
Matthew Riley man is a city councilman man, but hold up, this the breaker right here, I ain't know this. I thought, you know, that nigga was, he fired it up, you know, he, he getting him a little, a little tester or something. This nigga relapsed, so nigga if you relapse, nigga you was already a fucking drug addict.
Already man, already a drug addict. That mean, oh boy, look at this shit.
But I'm, Cap, but I'm loving this though, cuz they blasting his ass. Cuz guess what, if that, if the skin was different, oh Jack, you know, it would have been all kind of, uh, uh, critique. Oh that's, you should have never voted them in, they can't hold them type positions, whoop de, whoop, whoop, whoop. But, okay, what's the excuse now though?
Hey, and then he had his dog ass, he did hit that hit right, and did what he double. He sleeping in the car in broad daylight y'all, sleep man. Let's B roll on this fool huh?
Hey man, we got the body cam footage right here man, here we go.
Look at this fool Reggie man.
A city councilman in Cranston, Rhode Island faces a drug charge after a police officer finds him sleeping in his car with a crack pipe. Thanks for joining us here on Law and Crime, I'm Angelique Levy. That Cranston police officer's body camera recorded the interaction he had with Councilman Matthew Riley earlier this week. Take a look, you can see Riley sleeping, his mouth wide open as the officer approaches. Riley has a leader and a pipe in his hand.
Yeah, Woody, Woody.
No, not at all.
Roads open protest.
Turn around Woody, turn around.
Oh, no way dude, really?
Yes, yes, I was just taking, I was just, I'm already back from court.
He tell me, oh no way dude, he found out he was a councilman.
Come check you out man, I can't let you go, you were literally choking in your sleep, somebody flagged me down about it.
Oh, I have sleep apnea, I'm sorry.
Well, and then you have a crack pipe in your hand, so it's like.
Please, sorry.
Listen, I have a body camera, obviously, everything I have is recorded.
Hey Cap, let me tell you something bro, these, I'm loving these body cams, I'm loving these fucking body cams, I'ma tell you why.
He came racing and there was no way he can let him go nigga, we already seen it.
We already seen it live nigga, cuz I guarantee you, if that body cam wasn't on, he would let his ass ride.
Let him go, cuz guess what he said huh, when he looked at the ID?
He said, oh my god, oh no, oh my gosh, OMG.
Yeah, oh, he, he's one of us, he's a city councilman.
Not you Riley, please.
Riley, you crackhead ass some bitch, resign, get your ass up out of office man, and go get you some help man. That's the, this is one of our funny moment videos right here, this is a funny ass moment. It ain't too much, you can commentate on this man, this fool is an idiot, a plum, clean, straight idiot man. Look at him, and then what he say he had, sleep amia, what, what, what was the word he used?
It said sleep avenue.
Oh so, somebody walked up, put a pipe in your head while you fell asleep? How you gonna explain that one? And then, hey, then the officer, you would know he was a young cat, he say, oh damn man, he say, you know, I ain't gonna better let you go man, you know, and, and somebody flagged me down, you was sleeping in your car.
Yeah man.
I got sleep bomb, he said, but you had a pipe in your hand too.
You had a pipe in your hand man, god damn nigga, I'ma tell you something, hey, he, he, he was smoking on no step down, that nigga had that fin scale, they put that nigga straight asleep. That nigga was knocked out bro, this shit crazy bro.
He had himself good huh? And then the cold, cold part of body, that probably ain't crack, cuz I just told you, crack ain't even around no more man, that's, it's either fentanyl or meth.
That's what he really was smoking on, but.
Nigga crack ain't gonna just put you to sleep nigga, knock you out. You gonna be driving a hundred miles an hour someday wearing that little SUV you in, if you was on some crack, speed, try to go get you some more.
But you know Cap, to the untrained eye, when they see the meth pipe, the meth pipe, crack pipe, they look the same. The way, the way they smoking is they look the same, so to the untrained eye, he gonna think he is motherfucking crack, but the nigga really was smoking that meth.
No, well, well no, you make a good point, but the pipes are different, the crack pipe, prime example right here is one of my wax pens, it's empty. This is what a crack pipe would resemble, some, this, this shape, but it'd be all clear, glass.
We ain't talking about no stems nigga, out the corner store?
Yeah, that's what, that's what a crack pipe originally was. The meth pipes and the fentanyl pipes look like a real, like a smoke pipe, like when you smoking weed.
Yeah, with the little bubble, with the little bubble on it.
Yeah, there you go, you had one of them. Then he had one of them in his head or it was a stem.
I couldn't tell, they ain't show it, they ain't show it, I, I hope he show it later on in the video, so we can really, we can really see it.
I think he had that bubble man, I think he had that OG thing man.
Hey, let's watch a little bit more of this video man, this shit funny.
And what I've observed is on camera, so I can't pretend I didn't, you know, so arrest is gonna come here.
Oh Cap, he just did it Cap.
He said, what I reserved is on camera already, so, I, I can't, I can't, it's out of his hand basically like. I would have looked out for you dude, cuz I knew that would have put me in position as a police officer, that would have gave me leverage. With a city councilman, oh, that's leverage. You never know when you might need him, or one of your kids or something, feel me? But that's a connection for him, so he would let him go man, he said, you can hear it on his damn voice.
Yup, he would have let his ass go bro, that shit crazy.
It was out my head.
They're gonna check you out, you know, as far as I know, there's no drugs anywhere, so I can't, you know, so there's not a criminal investigation, there's more a health or wellbeing check type thing.
Thank you.
Hey, hold on, pause, pause. Now this is where you fucking up at sir, anybody else, you would have hurried up, checked their car for extra more drug. You gonna ask him is it more drug, and he talking about, no, no, and you gonna zap that and say, okay, well this ain't a criminal, oh hell no. It's favoritism still going down huh?
Yeah, cuz obviously if he got a pipe.
He supposed to be charged for under the influence, drug paraphernalia right now.
Bam, 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 bam.
That shit crazy.
Yeah, I obviously have to document it, you know.
Yeah, you gotta document it.
Thank you. Still will be no arrest.
What?
Still will be no arrest?
No, um, is there any, are there any drugs in the car or anything like that?
No, no, nothing.
Alright.
The officer questions Riley about his drug use, he's forthcoming and discusses struggling with addiction.
How long have you had this problem then?
It, it was a, it was a relapse, I've been clean thirteen years.
Pause huh?
Just went through a really, really.
Once again, this is the part where I talk about how they overlook us as being rehabilitated. Why in the hell should he get any action? And he got caught dead banged with drugs in his system and he was asleep off drugs. He should get charged, filed as a felony, you feel me? And go to jail, and spend money on fines and never become a politician again bro, cuz he violated his position of power.
Yeah.
Why? But now, y'all gonna flip the narrative and go get this motherfucker some help. And still put him back in office. You see the unfairness, you see the unfairness right here man, this is why I always say TV land, it ain't no damn justice, it's just them. It would never ever be justice to the public bro, it's gonna always be just them.
Just them.
Always gonna be just them man.
If that was us Cap, it'll say it was weed, the blunt gone, doobie left, yeah I said doobie, a doobie left, or maybe a spliff left. Nigga, they see that shit in that motherfucking, in that cup holder, in that ashtray, guess what they gonna finna do Cap, clink, clink.
Whole car, that's a PC, that's my probable cause to go further now with my investigation. And it's called an investigation now, he don't got no investigation, he just said that and stop. Which means don't leave, it, it does, it does not leave me to have a PC to further do an investigation or search your car, bullshit. You found that man high, you supposed to pull him out, detain him as y'all tell us, no you're not being arrested, you're just detained. Well, put his goddamn ass in some handcuffs and put him in the back of your car and go do what y'all do to us, tear that nigga shit up. Tear that shit up and then book him and take him to jail, no matter of fact, why you ain't call backup out there already? Why three, four more cars ain't swooped up?
Ooh.
Yeah, I'll wait on it.
Ooh, you know why?
Cuz he was a white man man, he was Woody.
Yeah.
Reggie was Woody, he was, he was Woody, gotta have been hurl, hurl be laying all out in the concrete some damn where man.
Goddamn right, cuz you know what Joe Biden said, y'all super predators.
Come on man, let's B roll the last of this man, see what the, the last of this clown doing, trying to explain this stuff.
Okay. Uh, do you know if any of that was laced with fentanyl or anything, cuz you were out, out and like, looked like you were choking.
Really?
Yeah, that's why, someone literally sprinted and flagged me down cuz I thought you were having a heart attack or choking.
Uh, I, no, not that at all.
EMTs arrived to check out Riley as the police officers search his vehicle, which is littered with trash and junk. The officer found a chore boy scouring pad in the glove box, chore boy is made of copper and metal. Drug users sometimes use a chore boy to make a crack pipe.
You gotta test it?
Yeah.
So, um, it's over here.
A second officer arrives, they approached the vehicle to test suspected drugs found in the car.
What's wrong with this guy?
Oh god, oh y'all always saying that cuz he, he's your cutter.
Down the drain for what?
So you don't know him at all?
You guys don't know?
I've never met him in my life.
I'm probably digging out just a smaller little rock so we don't have to break anything.
Uh, forget a little bit with the, um, the powder?
Yeah.
Got him. They got him TV land, drugs.
Be careful cuz he was on the nod, or like, it seems like anyways, it's mixed with something else bro.
Fentanyl man, come on stop, don't play with me, I know what I'm talking about, fentanyl, that's why he gonna walk.
Do you need the knife?
Yeah, I'll use that.
Be careful with that stuff, is, I don't know if that's fentanyl laced or not, there's white all over there, he doesn't know.
Yeah, I was just telling him the same thing, cuz I mean, you don't fall asleep usually if it's completely, you know, it's not an opiate.
Claims he was tired and he, and he may have sleep apnea, but I don't think that's gonna.
Especially like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, only calm a lot too, it's like, you stick out like a sore thumb.
Well, right away.
Fentanyl?
Uh, coke, crack, I ain't tested for fentanyl too.
I tested for both, just to make sure that I don't know what deal with him.
Can you just snap a picture of that?
The sergeant unseen tells the officers to charge Riley, then they look at a white powder on his driver's seat.
Wants to have his mother come get the car, but I'm not, I wouldn't, no, not getting there, touching all that, all that white powder, is that, that's.
Cleaning your pool can be a hassle, at least it used to be, meet the matronic.
Crack, yeah, yeah, that's definitely, that's definitely crack.
Yeah, yeah, most likely.
Yeah, he can smell it and he's burning up.
He has a bunch of chore boy and.
Should we have a toe?
Looks like he's like half living out of his car, there's like toiletries.
We're good, we're on private property.
Wow, they found crack, see, I told you it was laced or not.
You did say that, it was laced bro, that's why that nigga was, like you said, that's the, that's the reason that nigga was knowing off, you said that one.
I'll do all the evidence stuff, thank you. Alright, so, um, is he, rescue's good running?
They're just finishing up right now. He's got the, he's got the bro on everything over there, you see it?
Yeah, yeah, it's on, it's all.
They're finishing up right now.
That was in his glove compartment.
The first officer on scene also removed a crack pipe from Riley's vehicle. Riley appears to be okay after leaving EMTs and talking to the officer.
Yeah, I know, I saw it like I, uh, have an option here man, sorry.
Both them, so, and arrest record is our public record, I'm not gonna lie to you. There's, there's, there's not much we can do on this, unfortunately, if I was in your situation, I'd be in handcuffs.
No, no, I'm not saying, oh, I'm not saying don't.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In terms of, we give our kids as much.
Yeah, no listen, we are only required to release what we release and we won't, we have to release an arrest record by law, you know. Alright, jump in before you. We just wanna make sure, we gotta monitor you because you.
Yeah, just, I'm gonna probably done it alright.
You taking in some fentanyl man, and that's, that's, you know, we gotta make sure you're, you don't may not feel it right now, but God forbid something happens to you.
Yeah, no, I've never done that.
Pause huh? Fuck your ass up nigga. Oh no, no, I got sleep, sleep, uh, 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 sleep amia. Hey look man, I told you, that motherfucker was on some fin man, he had that fin in his system man, that fin had a nigga like, you could be in a conversation and less than one second, that motherfucker been did like this on you. Nodded on you. He was, bro, and then, then little, little, oh, before, before you, you ready say whatever you gonna say, and then look, trip. You see how the one officer, he was trying to play that role and be cool with him, but when that backup came, everything had to go by the book now, cuz he on camera too.
You saw, you saw the switch up?
And the call, and the call had already went in on radio when he made the stop.
Yeah, I saw that switch up too.
And then you see where he ended up, in handcuffs now, once the paramedics checked him out, the other police told him, oh, he need to be in handcuffs and arrested.
Oh, oh, when the backup came, they already said he's gonna get arrested.
Yeah.
The, but the officer, like the whole conversation changed because.
Look at this dude man, you see this dude?
Yeah, it was like, it was like he was talking to like a normal person, but soon as the, soon as the, the supervisor came and other backups, it became like a law enforcement conversation in.
Law enforcement, that embarrassment, like, how dare you embarrass us like this, you're a city councilman. You're supposed to represent higher ranking man, we are sworn in to the world, to uphold to the people, you are sworn in man.
Hey, that nigga was getting high, that nigga had some hubba bubbles.
That nigga had some hubba bubbles, and he was lacing, he was lacing it with that Krezak and that fin man, I told you he had that fin man. The police, the police smart ass, they went out in the country man, in Texas, they smart ass even knew better. He said, no man, this ain't no regular, uh, no, no, this ain't no regular, he, this was cut with something, cuz when I pulled up, he was out man, literally, choking on his own spit.
Yeah.
He was damn near, man, you know what, now that you think about it TV land, the officer probably saved his lane's life, he was finna OD man.
OD, oh choke?
Choked on his own spit and OD'd and died.
Yeah, but you know, this the dangerous thing with this, with, with this nigga smoking this, uh, fentanyl laced crack. Only thing he's gonna do bro, is, you know, crack already bad bro, it's gonna have you addicted to fentanyl for more. Nah, he got the opiate in his body, nah nigga, he, he might be fener for heroin.
Both, ain't no mic, you hit, you hit everything right on point man.
Yeah, yeah.
Give yourself a bomb for that one man.
Yeah, drop that bomb nigga, you smart chemist.
Yeah, what's that oak, what's that oak getting in the system huh? Oh boy, he gonna have a craving out this world, now you craving for crack, fentanyl, pills, anything you can get to, just to, to thrash that craving for that moment.
What's that white boy, what they call that shit, the white boy heroin, uh, OxyContin?
Yeah, OxyContin, girl and boy, that's girl and boy, that's when you miss, make, uh, dog food with, with, with crack. Heroin, cocaine, it's called boy grill.
Yeah, that shit crazy.
They used to call it a jumpstart, the old dope fiends back in the days, just called it the ju, a jumpstart.
God damn nigga, I don't want that jumpstart, fuck that shit. Hey man, I, I, I love this story cuz it shines a light on these crooked ass politicians that's over here trying to make rules and regulations for us citizens, but these motherfuckers can't even follow their own damn rules. Good, good, good story Cap, I got to salute you on this one.
The big lawmakers are the greatest big damn law breakers man. They make these laws, just think about it, he's a part of the judicial system. He sits down at big major meetings and makes decisions on what should go on in the inner cities and the inner communities that he's assigned over. And this motherfucker is a fucking dope fiend. That's something for y'all to really think about out there TV land, if you really take the time to sit back, just for a moment, a second, and think about it, say damn, both of them is actually really truly right. We got people running our city, running our country, regulating us as the people, and they ain't no different, and damn sure ain't no better than us, cuz they dope fiends man.
Damn dope fiends.
Here it is, you gotta live a straight life, a straight narrow life, you gotta follow certain rules. And they break all the rules they want, their kids, everything, they try to sweep it under the rug. You see what this some bitch said before we get up out of here, his only concern, oh yeah, no, no, no problem, take me to jail, I'm just saying is, is, is any of that other stuff, can the public get a hold to it, is it gonna be on my record? This is what he was asking basically, and the other white boy said, hey man, look, I ain't, I'm gonna be honest with you, it's public record now, me and me, you can go pull that shit up right now huh? We gonna pull this shit up right now and find out what the final results was, right now, cuz it's public record. That's why he was trying to croon them then and talk them out of that part, and they was saying, ain't nothing we can do about it, it's all right here, it's on body camera already. The offices, the, the machines and the, and the, the cameras and the machines in our offices has already recorded this. When I get in and I get ready to close out for my shift, I gotta take this camera off, put it on the charger, and take the footage itself, turn it in, cuz this is what they gotta do with the footage, add date, if you ain't seen this shit already, you can put it up online and they'll show you. That's what they do to this shit, when they go in and they get ready to shift change and they get off, they gotta turn them cameras in and the footage that they did for that whole entire day of their shift is turned in man. So this is why they told him, hey man, hey Reggie, it's out our hands right now Reggie.
So, so Cap, you know what's so crazy, I, I, I agree with you on this one bro, but he was concerned by his kids finding out bro. That's what he was, that's what he was concerned about, if you listened, if you watched the video, he kept asking about his kids, that's why he didn't want the record being public.
Oh, I didn't catch, I didn't, I didn't catch that part when he, he kept saying about his, is that when he got out the ambulance and he kept mentioning his kids?
Yeah, when he was talking to, I guess, the, the sergeant or whatnot, he kept, he kept, he kept asking about his kids, let's see, uh, we gonna, uh, we gonna bring that part up just real quick, so TV land, so TV land can see it, and then, and then we gonna take it home, alright, right here, here, here we go, right here.
Uh. Arrest record is our public record, I'm not gonna lie.
Hold on.
Listen, your health and your wellbeing is worth way more than any political career.
Riley then expressed his concern about the media finding out about his arrest.
We, we don't report nothing to the media unless someone tells them, so, and arrest record is our public record, I'm not gonna lie to you.
Hey shit here, we already watching you on the media, what, what is your concern about? Shit, you already on blast.
So that's what it was bro, he didn't want the media to grab it cuz his kids is gonna see it, and check this out, he going through it, he going through a divorce. That's what, that was his excuse on relapsing, because his wife filed for divorce, but that's probably why she filed, he probably was already smoking bro.
He said it thirteen, he said, he claimed.
He lying.
Yeah, he lying, he's, that's why she left your dog ass motherfucker, she on drugs.
Yeah nigga, you fucking off the money, nigga, the, the, the bank accounts went low, you ain't paying the bills nigga, cuz you over here getting high, and I know he, bro, them big ass hubba bubbles he, he had in that goddamn thing bro, that nigga getting super high bro.
Hey, what you say he had huh, hubba bubbles?
Man, them hubba bubbles man, shit.
What's the hubba bubba, huh, the gram?
Man, they have a hubba bubba, we kinda fitted out slabs, big hubba bubbles man, that nigga getting stupid high bro, you, look, you know he had a slab cap, you didn't see when he asked the, uh, police officer for that box cutter knife? For real? Yeah, for, at, to say, for you young niggas out there, you don't understand, you know, if you see big, I used to have, I used to, I, my thumb, I used to have my thumb there real long, so when I put a line in that motherfucker, I can just pop that hole, you know?
Hey, especially that Krezak, it was easy, or it's a little bitty old safety pin.
Yeah, there you go Cap, yeah.
That's crazy man, yeah this fool, this fool went beyond getting high, he, he, this what he do for real, for real man, and not to mention, nigga had on slacks, a dress shirt with some tennis shoes man, like bubble gums.
He was creased up, yeah, I ain't seen no wrinkles.
Hey look here Reggie, go get you some help Reggie. What's his, what's his full name for they be thinking we talking about the other guy?
Nah, nah, we ain't talking about, his name is, uh, uh, Matthew Riley, Matthew Riley.
Riley, pardon my soul for Reggie, Matthew Riley, Riley go get you some damn help man, your family gone man, they gone, they, they.
It's gone, hey, hey, home run, the ball is out the park nigga, they gone.
They gone, so you can forget about that one. Mama's gone man, mama's out of here, she, she, she done had enough, matter of fact, that's why that nigga getting high huh? She took the rest of the pension and everything. That's what, that's why he getting high, stressed. Rest of the pension and broke wide and said, and I'm coming back to get, matter of fact, get your ass up out the house, just get up out of here.
Cap, you right.
Why was he so damn junky, that's a nigga living in his car man.
He was, that's why the police officer said, his toiletries back here, like he's living in the car. She kicked his ass out, cuz he's a fucking dope fiend. Take us home Cap.
Man, you dope fiend ass mother, you, you dope fiend ass son of a gun, you ain't got no business being in office man, representing no city man, nowhere man. Hey listen TV land, y'all be careful out here with your voting man, and voting these councilmen in and these people in the neighborhoods, because you just think it's the right thing to do, or you, you just feel you going off the hype. As you can see publicly man, the type of people you're voting in, and to your communities, to run your communities bro, cats like Riley man. On that note man, stay away from that damn fentanyl, that damn heroin. On that note, man, stay away from that damn fentanyl, that damn heroin, cocaine, meth, any of the above, man, stay away from it, man. There's no greater value in anyone using hardcore drugs, popping pills, drinking syrup, none of that shit, man. We don't condone it over here, man, stay away from it, man. We gonna take it back to the old slogan, just say no to drugs, the mighty W, Watts, W A T T S. We are taught to survive. And we out this bitch.